Everyone, it is Tuesday, May 28, 2024, and I'd like to call the City Council meeting to order. We'd like to begin by inviting Pastor Troy Garner and the Fellowship of Faith Church forward for the invitation.
Psalms forty-six and one says, "God is our refuge and strength, a very present help in trouble." Let us pray. God in you we have our hope, in you we have help, in you we have a hedge of protection. As Acts 17:28 says, "It is in you that we move, live, and have our being." On tonight, we pause to tell you thank you for your blessing us. We don't take your loving grace for granted. We thank you for this place called Madison where our roots are planted. We thank you for your gift of wisdom, and may you give it to the councilpersons and Mayor Finley. Bless each district, the homes and families therein. And also on tonight, may you be pleased with the discussions and deliberations. Continue to encourage and give strength to all persons who serve this city and community. In your strong and sovereign name we pray, let everyone say amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor. Please join me in a pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is standing in the highest standing among all. Roll call please. Mayor Finley.
Here.
Councilmember Oblewski. Councilmember Spears. Councilmember Powell. Councilmember Shaw.
Here.
Council President Bartlet.
Here.
Councilmember Denzine.
Yes.
Councilmember Seaford.
Here.
Are there any amendments to the agenda?
We do. We're going to remove Resolution Number 2024-140R from under public hearings. This was for a weed lien, which we will not have to address. We have resolved that.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have approval of Minutes Number 2024-09-RG.
It's approved.
Motion in about three seconds, but let's get it carried. Any discussion? Ready for vote. Councilmember Seaford.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Council President Bartlet.
Aye.
Councilmember Oblewski. Councilmember Spears. Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
And the motion passes. Under Presentations and Awards, we begin with Chief Bailey.
We're in a life-saving award now. So just a little background. The Star of Life is awarded to someone who is successful in saving a life while medical interventions are being performed. To qualify for this award, a patient must survive and be discharged from the hospital. The unit citation is awarded to someone who acts as part of the crew or team that provides support other than those actively engaged in saving a life during a fire, a rescue, or a medical emergency. On April the sixth, 2024, Hemsy responded to Madison Hospital for an emergency transfer of a critical cardiac patient to Huntsville Hospital. Upon Hemsy leaving the hospital, they decided they needed a rider in the event that the patient went into cardiac arrest. So they needed a second medic in the back of the ambulance. They contacted Madison Fire and picked up Captain Richardson on the ramp at Station Three. While en route to Huntsville Hospital, the patient went into cardiac arrest. Captain Richardson immediately began CPR, and paramedic Blankenship placed him on the monitor and delivered one shot. A pulse was restored after one shot. Paramedic Blankenship also administered cardiac medication. Hemsy EMT Everly was driving when the patient went into cardiac arrest. He continued transport while they were working on the patient, and they arrived safely to the hospital. The patient was later released from the hospital with no deficits, and the patient's in the crowd tonight. He decided to come and be part of this, but doesn't want to speak. So the Star of Life goes to Captain Richardson and paramedic Blankenship. And Everly couldn't make it today. He's working his full-time job up in Columbia Fire Department. So just like to congratulate both of these for their continued efforts in protecting all of our people. And I will stick. One last thing. I just want to again really shout out on the success of our EMS delivery system. When you talk about the combination of Hemsy along with Madison Fire, I don't think you're going to find anything better in this area. So thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Next, we have Presentation of Employee of the Year awards with Mrs. Debbie Overcash and the Madison Rotary Club.
Thank you, David. Oops, I'm still not round. Hi, I'm Debbie Overcash, a member of the Rotary Club of Madison and chair of the Madison Employee of the Year recognition program. This is the 24th year that the Rotary Club of Madison, in cooperation with the City of Madison, has had the privilege of recognizing outstanding Madison public servants. These fine employees have been selected by their supervisors for this very well-deserved recognition. Our appreciation tonight includes a plaque for everyone, inclusion on the perpetual plaque here at City Hall, a monetary gift from the Rotary Club of Madison, and our entire city's gratitude for a job very well done. We are happy tonight to recognize outstanding employees who represent law enforcement, fire protection, and community services. And I just want on a personal note, this is the 24th year that I have had the honor and privilege of doing this. Our city is blessed with so many incredible employees. So I personally want to say thank you to everybody that is serving our city so beautifully. And I will tell you that of the three write-ups when I got them, I cried at all three because we are truly blessed to live in this city. So thank you all for all that you do. If Mayor Finley, Council President Bartlet, and Rotary Club of Madison President Eric Simonson will join me right here, we'll recognize our outstanding 2024 Madison City employees. Chief Bailey and Madison Firefighter of the Year Luke Hall, will you please join us up front?
Our 2024 Madison Firefighter of the Year is Driver-Paramedic Luke Hall. Luke has worked for the city for six years. In the past year, Luke has earned the rank of Driver and has completed the Flight Medic Critical Care Class and another EMS instructor program. Notably, he obtained two life-saving awards this year. One of those was due to his swift action in transporting a six-month-old baby in respiratory arrest to Women's and Children's Hospital, resulting in the child's life being saved. Chief Bailey states that "In my interactions with Luke, whether I'm on training ground, at emergency calls, or in the station, I have routinely perceived him to be the quiet professional. He is able to keep himself and others calm regardless of the incident and provides excellent guidance in any training environment. He truly exemplifies the positive professional character that we strive for at Madison Fire and Rescue." Luke's captain, Russ Kennington, states, "Luke is dedicated to the fire service. He is a continuous student of the craft, and he exemplifies everything that Madison Fire represents. He is a committed employee who consistently exceeds expectations, continues to increase his knowledge, his skills, and abilities, and continues to grow not only as a Madison Fire Team member, but as a person. Luke helps his fellow firefighters by serving as the EMS division instructor and mentor, helping with instruction for the training division, teaching rescue bailout, high-rise operations, and more. He is a part of the Health and Safety Committee and created a binder that lists all mental health resources available to personnel." Luke's Battalion Chief Chad Minard praises his service to the paramedic program, his leadership during shift and live-fire training, and how he brings new ideas and knowledge back to the department after he attends training conferences. He states, "He leads by example and never speaks negatively. I highly recommend Luke." Luke's fellow firefighters agree with that his positive attitude, strong work ethic, and willingness to assist in any situation make him an asset to the department. He does extra cleaning around the station, extra training, and is always willing to do the little things. He has played a pivotal role in fostering a sense of camaraderie within the department. Outside of work, you can find Luke hunting, fishing, and even working for the Athens Ambulance Service, but he mostly enjoys spending time with his family and his fiancee Brianna Fardier, who is a Madison dispatcher, as well as their dog and cat, who are part of their family. Luke and Brianna are headed to the beach this summer and are planning their wedding in October. Congratulations, Luke." Congratulations again, Luke.
Thank you, Paul.
Chief Gandy and Police Officer of the Year, Officer Joshua Overman, will you please join us?
Our 2024 Madison Police Officer of the Year is Joshua Overman. Officer Overman joined the department in April of 2022. During the short amount of time that he has been a Madison officer, he has worked extremely hard to develop his knowledge and skills as a police officer, and he has established a record of excellence. Police Chief Gandy states, "Officer Overman is an outstanding young police officer who espouses the core values of our organization. He strives to ensure a safe community, and his work ethic is respected and admired by his peers and supervisors alike." Just within the past six months, Officer Overman has fielded 881 calls for service. Out of those calls for service, he self-initiated hundreds of routine patrols to check for security concerns and criminal activity in neighborhoods, on city property, and at local businesses. He also conducted 227 traffic stops for a variety of moving and equipment violations, along with his narcotics interdiction efforts. His proactive approach has led to 44 arrests, and more than 20 of those arrests were for possession of narcotics, including many felony narcotics arrests. Early in his career, Officer Overman developed the drive and knowledge to take dangerous narcotics off the streets of Madison. This is not an easy task. Criminals, especially ones involved in narcotics, learn police tactics, and just as police learn how they are currently conducting their business, they change those tactics to avoid detection. Officer Overman takes extra time to keep up with the new criminal trends, and he develops successful strategies to find narcotics and get them out of Madison. He does all this while entering his regular calls for service and serving the residents of Madison with routine law enforcement needs. In one instance this past February, Officer Overman noticed an occupied vehicle sitting behind a gas station. He contacted the occupants of the vehicle, and through his investigation, he was able to locate 58 grams of methamphetamine and numerous packages for sale. He also found drug paraphernalia and a firearm. This led to two felony arrests. He has also found stolen firearms, a ghost gun, stolen property, and offenders trafficking stolen identities through his proactive work and effort. Captain Nick McRae states that Officer Overman's outstanding work ethic and positive attitude keep with the highest tradition of the Madison Police Department by protecting and serving citizens to the highest standards attainable. Outside of work, he enjoys spending time with his wife Amber, two dogs, and one cat, and his favorite hobbies are mountain biking and lifting weights. Congratulations, Joshua. Congratulations again, Joshua. All right, and last but certainly not least. Mayor Finley's selection for the 2024 Employee of the Year is Candace Watson. Candace, will you please join us? Police Communications Supervisor Candace Watson is the city's 2024 Employee of the Year. Candace has been a dispatcher and supervisor working out of the Madison County 911 Center for the city since 2015. Prior to coming to the city of Madison, she's a paramedic with the Athens Limestone Ambulance Service. Candace is one of the city's most experienced and dedicated dispatchers, and she devotes herself wholeheartedly and professionally to the service of her community and her fellow first responders. Candace has aided, comforted, and reassured countless citizens of Madison in their most critical moments of need. Mayor Paul Finley states, "Our 911 dispatchers are our first first responders. Their ability to quickly connect members of our community with the help that they need is an invaluable resource. Candace exemplifies the very best qualities of her profession. Candace has aided in apprehension of many suspects through her excellent attention to detail, intelligence gathering, and forethought during unfolding incidents. One such incident involved her monitoring other agencies' calls for service during the overnight hours. One night, she noticed a call reporting a robbery of a business in West Huntsville. Knowing that these types of robberies, suspects sometimes rob multiple stores in a row in the general area, she reached out to some of Madison's businesses located on Highway 72 and provided them with a description of the offenders in the case that they were to attempt another robbery. This led to a store employee recognizing individuals who matched the description entering the store, and the employee alerted Madison Police, who were able to apprehend the suspects. Because of Candace's forethought and preemptive actions, these individuals were prosecuted for crimes in both Madison and the city of Huntsville. Candace's supervisor, Daniel Weaver, states, "As a supervisor, Candace is a focused, driven, and effective leader. She is respected by her peers and listens to the concerns of others in her decision-making process. Her judgment during critical life-threatening situations is excellent, and those on her shift depend on her calm ability to make sound decisions. Outside of work, Candace is an avid dog lover and bird feeder, and she spends many of her days on her family's cattle farm in Tennessee. Candace has touched many lives through her dedication to service. While she may not be seen by the public, her impact is felt by so many. Candace is a valued and integral member of her division, the police department, and the city of Madison." Congratulations, Candace. The residents of Madison, along with the mayor, city council, and the Rotary Club of Madison, thank these fine individuals for their service to our community and congratulate you all again on a job very well done. Please join me again in congratulating our 2024 honorees. Thank you, Mayor and council, for letting us continue this tradition. We appreciate it.
All right. Thank you so much, and thank you to our employees for the work you've done. With that, we are going to take a short intermission and enjoy some refreshments and honor these employees of the year. So if you will allow us that, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay everyone, we are back from our intermission and celebration of our employees of the year, and we will now move to public comments. We have a number of comment cards turned in, and we will begin with Oscar Draper Senior. Please come forward.
They said three minutes this time, so you know the wild man Solomon says, "Oh, beef is better than sacrifice." So we're gonna see if we can do this thing in less than three minutes. Now, my name is Oscar Draper Senior, and I was born and raised on the Fleming place. I used to work for Mr. Walter Fleming, Mr. Joe Fleming, Mr. G W Young, Mr. Will Stockwell, Mr. Mathis. I used to work for all those fellas, and I think they taught me just much as my daddy did. But I'm here to address a little problem we got in the Franklin Sub Division. When they leave the list, they come through 243 Pennsylvania Avenue, they get to the four-way stop, they don't ever stop at that four-way stop. They just take a right on Monument and go right on down to Boyd's Road and keep on going. And we're gonna have a big humbeen up there one day, but I'm hoping we don't have that. Now, let me say this, I want to congratulate our police force, I don't care what nobody say, we got the best police force you can find anywhere. I worked two, I worked five years with the State Troop when Major Ray and Major Manning was overseer, and let me tell you something sir, we've got a police force, and Mr. Mayor, thank you, you and your crew, we thank you for what y'all do for us. And I'm wrapping it up, them seven years in Germany, y'all looked out for my family. I got three of my family members that retired, one in the Navy, Air Force, and Army, and when I was in Vietnam two times, getting wounded both times, y'all looked out for my family, the police force and the mayor. And when I was in Korea four times, y'all looked out for my family. And I'm proud, I'm a true Alabamian, and I want y'all to just, you couldn't pay me to do nothing wrong in this town knowing that. And I told Loretta Marsh in Athens, I told Kay Bowden in Decatur, Mayor Kay Bowden, I told Loretta Spencer, I told Mayor Battle, you couldn't pay me to do nothing wrong in this town knowing that. Check my record out, and I've lived eighty-five years, my record is clean, so we thank you all for serving us down through the years, and y'all have a blessed week, and keep us in your prayers, because I tell you, we in trouble, we need somebody in that White House up there to help us out.
Thank you so much sir.
Thank you. The next person is Kathy Young.
Do y'all need my address? I'm not sure if you have it.
Do you know what district you're in?
I'm in Hardest.
Oh, you're in Hardest, thank you.
So do you need my address?
No, we do not, I have it on the card, thank you.
Well, I appreciate y'all letting me speak this evening, and I must say that I really would never think that we would actually be here discussing this topic about sexually explicit books in the library, and so this is where we're gonna get started. Also, about having a conversation about this, so a good bit ago, I think two or three weeks ago, someone mentioned that the legislature didn't define what sexually explicit means, but I believe if we have common sense, we should know what that means, and it just really bothers me that our children are actually exposed to this. I went into the library and looked at a book, it was called "When Aiden Becomes a Brother." Oh, I'm supposed to be talking over here on, I'm sorry. And the book, now this is an easy read, this is for like three, four, and five-year-olds. Well, when you open it, when you look at the book, it looks real innocent, "When Aiden Became a Brother," when you open it up, though, you find out that Aiden was actually born as a girl, and he decided that he didn't like pink, and he didn't like frills, and he must be a boy, so he got to change to be a boy. And that's at a very, very young age to be exposing children to transgenderism, in my opinion. So anyway, I just hope that y'all use common sense and do something about this. I really don't know where you would put those type of books, but anyway, some of the other books definitely need to be removed to the adult section, and also, our constitution, whenever it was written by our founding fathers, there is individual rights, there is freedom of expression, and that sort of thing, but I don't think they meant explicit, sexually explicit books for our children, and I thank you very much for letting me speak to you.
Thank you Ms. Young. Next is Emily Jones.
Hey, good evening, I'm Emily Jones, I think a lot of you know me, you know me.
You know what district you're in?
Four, okay. A lot of you know me for our event last year with the Madison Library with Moms for Liberty. Obviously, we are very big patrons of the library, we are there often, we meet monthly with our organization, we do events all throughout the year, we're planning another one very soon. There are a lot of concerns in the library, there are statewide issues. The APLS changed, made policy changes, what, a week and a half ago, they're very practical, common sense, policy changes that require children to only access children material, so my nine-year-old son can't continue to check out books like Tender Queer that show fully depicted images of men giving other men blowjobs, common sense that children are not accessing that. There also is a policy change that requires libraries to move material, sexually explicit material, from a kids' section to the adult section. These are common sense, six-year-olds do not need to be getting books titled "It's Perfectly Normal" with full depictions of male and female genitalia, and when I say full depiction, I mean we're labeling clitoris, vulva, anus. I don't think a six-year-old needs to know that. A six-year-old doesn't need to know how to prevent getting STDs, how to have an abortion, not appropriate for six-year-olds. Our library system, within a week, voted to have policy changes that defy every single thing that the APLS pushed out, and the APLS did it because the governor pushed the APLS to make changes. The governor pushed for these changes because parents across the state have had enough of this being shoved down their kids' throats. This is not a couple of parents in Madison that don't want this material in front of their kids, this is a statewide issue, this is a national issue if we want to get down to it. Our children are being sexualized, and this library system has no concern with it, and through those changes, they are putting half a million dollars in jeopardy from the state because despite what you all think, the APLS can withhold money, just like you can withhold money from the library. You vote to approve this budget, you have the authority and the control to force the library to do what is right for children. This is not a Republican, Democratic thing, it is none of that other than protecting the innocence of children, protecting parental rights. If I want to have a conversation with my son about abortion, that is my right, based on my terms and his age, not wandering into the library where I have to hover over him, pick up every single book, review every single page, read every single page, and then say, "Okay, son, this is appropriate or not." Force the issue and get this fixed.
Thank you Ms. Jones. Next is Carissa Callen.
Carissa Callen, Limestone County actually, but I am a current patron of the Huntsville Madison County Public Library, and I have been for forty-something years. So all content has intent, and you've seen the content, I've met with several of you already, you've seen what is in these books, so you cannot deny the intent, and now we cannot deny the intent of the library board, who must think that children are at a maturity level to be able to absorb and understand graphic rape, sex toys, other explicit content, because after eight months of working on policy changes, they unanimously passed revisions last week that not one time mentioned sexual content for minors. You've heard about the APLS, let's just set that aside for a minute. You've been hearing from parents who are concerned, why are you not listening to your constituents and the patrons of your library? All we have asked is that the books be moved, all right, these books that address gender ideology can be put in a parenting section. Probably half the libraries, I've visited some, some do, some don't, about half the libraries already have a parenting section, it's not that hard. Move the other ones up to the adult section, and then those who want access to these books can still have it, it's a win-win, but little hands and little eyes will not find them on the shelf. I emailed you this afternoon with a letter from a board-certified pediatrician out of Montgomery, please take time to read that in the next day or two, and think about the rising generation of taxpayers. All right, these are your next citizens in Madison. Do you want porn-addicted, sexually-obsessed people in your city? We still recoil when we see a news report of someone arrested. We still recoil when we see a news report of someone arrested for electronically soliciting and grooming a minor. That happened last week, all right, but that's happening in the library with books on the shelf. I want to read some from your Madison branch. "The Big Bath House," easy reader, I showed that when I was here before, "When Aiden Became a Big Brother." Um, "The Boys' Guide to Growing Up," this is for ages eight, and it has a detailed drawing of a penis and an erection. It's even labeled for teenage boys. I don't call my eight-year-old a teenager yet. It's perfectly normal. Naked illustrations of heterosexual, homosexual adults having sex, adults, all right? Um, "Fine, a comic book about gender," another graphic novel aimed at teenagers, but the illustrations are of adults. Why is that in the teenage section? "Being You, a first conversation about gender that tells children that they could be neither or they could be both." I'll stop there, there's plenty of teen books. But we all know what's coming next, and I'm talking about June and Pride Month. Will your publicly funded library have these books that go against the APLS code out for minors on display? And are you, the city of Madison, willing to pay a share in the additional $525,000 to cover the loss of state funds? You already paid $1 million to the library. So, it is within your responsibility, and it is within your position-
Thank you, Ms. Callen. Your time is up. And next person is Rachel Homolak.
Rachel Homolak, District Four. Um, children of Alabama, specifically here in Madison, are trusting you to protect them from being targeted, groomed, and sexualized by the books that are in the Madison library. Children cannot consent to these materials, and you aren't even giving the parents the opportunity to consent to these materials. Please stop putting the microphone volume down, thank you. Look, these parents don't know about these books, they are completely unaware of it. Okay, if you polled everybody in the area, trust me, none of these parents have any idea that these sexually explicit materials are on the shelves, just there, for their little kids to go and grab. So, is it fun to just be deceitful to your constituents? Is it fun to just, you know, trick them so that their kids can find these materials? Sounds like it, so fun that you're willing to put $526,000 on the line of our taxpayer dollars because you won't move few books. What a hissy fit, wow, what a statement. You need to make sure that everybody here knows exactly that that's what you're doing, okay? Um, guess what? Like was stated before, Governor Ivey, our governor, is the one who implemented these policies. Do not defy Governor Ivey, okay? The APLS voted and passed on these. You are responsible for telling the parents what's really going on in the library. So, this here is a warning, we need to warn all the parents, then, of what's actually in our library. You need to tell them it is only fair that you actually tell them what is going on. Look, I made you this nice sign, aren't I nice? We can provide these for you, make sure you have them outside of every single child, children's section, teen's section, whatever. We'll provide it for you. You know, if you want people outside of those sections to answer questions, we'll provide it for you. Because it's only fair that you let the parents know what is actually happening, and what you are not only funding, but now you're going to lose funding for. Wow, wow. So, you know, do that, or how about you just heed our governor's policy, okay? So, children, just be able to roam their own section of the library without having to worry about stumbling upon images like this, harmful books that sexualize them, okay? Parents should be able to just take their kids to the library without threat of harm. Please put these books where they belong, the garbage, but for now, we'll just say, the adult section, okay? Do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the council, please come forward, with your name and your district? Okay.
Hello, my name is Angela Gary, I live in District Five. It's a pleasure to see the councilman tonight, uh, haven't been here in a while. But I was driving down Hughes Road and getting, about myself, I'm just squirming in and saying hello. And it just happens to be on the agenda about the, um, DAX Swattec renewal with the resolution, I think it's 147, or something like that, it's been legal. Um, I am still staunchly opposed to that, because I requested SOIA materials, and DAX Swattec informed in 2016 contributed $10,000 to Paul Finley's mayoral campaign. I got checks back from 2020, not 2016, 2016 through 2020. They said there's no accounting for, there was no resolution for this. Brian Kilgore, there was no resolution until Brian Kilgore made that in September, I believe it was the last year, maybe possibly the year before that. In 2000, I don't, you all may truly believe it, I don't know, but I find it hard to believe that DAX Swattec or anybody made a $10,000 contribution and waited four years to expect a return, to get $60,000 a year from the city of Madison. And the city has also hired someone to help, and they say, you know, I heard this, I didn't watch all the council meetings, because that's a little much for us to know it sometimes, that, uh, if there's been an employee hired that's going to help in Montgomery, I can only imagine that would be to be going to the governor's office and for, um, people like DAX Swattec that are in charge of PACs and that type of thing, although I realize he resides in Birmingham. Um, I don't think he waited four years for a return on his $10,000 investment, I don't believe that. I will die not believing that, you will go out of office, and I still cannot believe that. Y'all can believe it, uh, you want to? All it, um, I may have done a good sales job on you. I don't understand why the SOIA information cannot be provided to me, because, and I will continue to request it until, um, my body's burned in the infir- in the crematory, or whatever my husband decides to do with it, whoever's, leaves me, who's left prior to me. As you can tell, I'm not prepared to talk to this, um, I'm, I'm not even sorry.
You're out of time, Sarah, thank you.
Thank you, and it's nice to see you all, and thank you for what you do.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council?
Jennifer Coe, Ashley State, District Five. Um, I was just gonna follow up on what Ms. Gary brought up about the DAX Swattec. Resolution number 2024-147, our agreement with Swattec, Von Brian, for the annual contract, which is $60,000. Um, it includes governmental affairs, consulting, and lobbying. This agreement suggests they will develop a comprehensive strategy for successful achievement of Madison priorities. So, I just wanted to get a, sort of an idea of what, what are our priorities for this annual year? And, uh, please define that, and the city of Madison, um, what, you know, what this contract will be related to, what the priorities will be? Will we, um, will we realize ample street lighting at night, road repairs? Um, any, anything more for the parks and recreation, or what, what exactly will we be, what benefits will we realize for that, um, $60,000? Oh, and I just wanted to say, um, for the fireworks, the, um, liberalizing that law, I forget what resolution it is, um, do these, any of these have sound? Hopefully, those won't have sound, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coe. Anyone else like to address the council?
Marjorie Daley, District Five. I come to these council meetings to give my opinions and to public comment for the record. The big issue I see in Madison City is cronyism and a waste of the future tax dollars. We're, we're about $150 million plus since you guys took over, uh, in debt till 2048, 2050, something like that. So, you know, I probably won't see it being paid off. Um, okay, so, you know, I, I see that, you know, the state of Alabama is a black belt. We have poor people that don't even have drinkable water, and yet, up here in the north, Madison City and Huntsville, the tax dollars come in and they're wasted. People need clean drinking water, but it's more important for us to have baseball and pickleball. I really, you know, it's sad, it's sad that you guys actually do this, this whole thing. Um, now, let's talk about the civic awareness, which I was the only person denied, and the mayor says that I should let him onto my private social media? It, it's nuts. You know, I have many open public, uh, social media accounts, you can go on, but I have one private, and it's private, and it's set up with algorithms, and unless you have your Facebook over five years, and you live within the local community, you cannot get on there. It's an algorithm, I don't choose it. Some might choose, but, okay, um, I also want to mention Brian Kilgore. You know, you get respect when you respect people, and the first residency meeting he had with us, he told us he does not work for the residents. So, he lost my respect the day he had that meeting with us, and has nothing to do with anything else, nor should that have to do with me being allowed in the civic awareness class. That's a violation of, anyway, let me get to these here ordinances. I see 2024-156, Hal Burton survey for Palmer Park. We do not own Palmer Park. Then, 2024-119, we're opening a can of worms with this fireworks, and there's no consideration for the community at all. 2024-147, Swattec. Swattec donated $10,000 to Mayor Finley's campaign, and now, we, the citizens, have to pay him 60 grand a year for ten years. It's just unfair, and it should not be put on the, on the agenda from the mayor, because he was the one who benefited, and so is Swattec. Um, now, I see one, 2024-125 is another high density. Do we really need another high-density area in our city? I mean, let's finish what we're doing now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Daley, anyone else like to address the council? And then we will close comments and move to the consent agenda and finance committee report.
Uh, finance committee looked over all of the consent agenda, and we're gonna, I might ask for a motion here in a minute, but I wanted to point out a couple things. First of all, donation from L. Tucker to the Senior Citizen Center, and also from Huntsville Gymastics Center, $200 to the recreation donation account. Those are two things I want to point out.
Your motion in a second?
Motion.
Motion second, any discussion? Ready for a vote?
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Council President Bartlet.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky. Councilmember Spears. Councilmember Denzine. Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
And the motion passes. Presentation of report, being with Mayor Finley.
Okay, two quick things. One, I have a check here, um, for $20,000 from Arthur Orr to the Madison Public Library, and it's to support, um, council, or support the city in supporting the library, and so I'd like to ask council to, um, bring in this $20,000.
May I approve?
Motion second, any discussion?
Just came by my office and brought it, and said, "I'd like you guys to have this."
That's wonderful, thank you. Ready for a vote?
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Council President Bartlet.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky. Councilmember Spears. Councilmember Denzine. Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, and the only other thing I had does go to the Swattec contract. I wanted to, um, make sure I address a couple things. One, the good news for the city of Madison is the budget is now complete, the governor has signed it. Part of what the Swattec team, working with Tracy Gillespie, helped us secure was $500,000 that will go directly towards the police and fire training facility that will be built on Celtic Drive. So, Gerald, uh, Gerald Smith is working right now, um, on facilities and grounds on what the entire Celtic Drive, uh, area will look like. Um, but this is money that was secured, it was our number-one priority, and they led that charge. In addition, they always help us from a city standpoint with all the legislation that's out there. One of the things they helped, they tried to help us with, it was unfortunately not able to pass, was SSUT internet sales tax piece, um, but they were always keeping us abreast of what's going on. And I do applaud council for helping us to bring Tracy in, that connection definitely helped. And I want to thank our state legislators also, but especially Rex Reynolds, who kind of helped us from one side to manage this. And I will address, you know, what, what Ms. Gary said, there is no question, um, um, Swattec was part of the $80,000-plus that we raised in 2016, but she keeps asking for FOIA stuff going back to 2016, 2017, 18, 19, 20. There's nothing there until 2020 or 2021, when council needed someone to help us support the state with the $5 million that we were gonna get on Madison Boulevard, and that was the first time that we contracted them, and for four of the last five years, they've helped us get a half a million dollars. $500,000 this year, $500 last year for the community center, the year before for the community center, and two years before that for Madison Boulevard. So, great investment on what I hope you guys support, again. I understand how we're trying to tie those together, but there's nothing there from 16 to 20. We simply, when we needed somebody, went through council, and you guys supported that. So, thank you for doing it and helped us out. That's all I have.
Hey, thank you. Uh, District One and Two are not here tonight, so District Three?
Um, I have no new business.
District Four?
New business.
Hey, I have a couple of resolutions. First, I have Resolution Number 2024-148-R, authorizing the archiving of the May 22nd City Council Work Session.
Move to approve?
Hey, motion in a second, any discussion? Ready for a vote?
Councilmember Denzine. Councilmember Shaw. Council President Bartlet.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky. Councilmember Spears. Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
And the motion passes. Next, I have Resolution Number 2024-165-R, authorizing pedestrian improvements to Gillespie and Hughes, not exceeding $50,000 to be paid from the council's special project budget.
May I approve?
Second.
Hey, motion in a second. Uh, just to, um, elaborate a little bit, we've had some constituents, uh, comment on how difficult it is to cross Hughes Road. I want to thank Michael in Engineering for finding the best location to assist in pedestrian crossing. Okay, ready for a vote?
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Council President Bartlet.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky. Councilmember Spears. Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
And the motion passes. Thank you, council. District Six.
All right, first, I'd like to make everyone aware of the fact that the Madison Police and Citizens Committee is not going to be meeting tomorrow, uh, as previously scheduled. Their next meeting will be on July 23rd at the Madison Public Library. Uh, and the second thing, I'd like to thank the American Legion Post 229 yesterday for doing the Veterans Memorial, Memorial Day ceremony. They did a wonderful job, it was, it was beautiful to be there, and I, I thank them for allowing me to be a part of it. Um, it's always good to just stop and remember those that are fallen, that didn't come home, but yet went to fight to protect our freedoms and to keep us from tyranny. And I appreciate all that they do. And to any of you out there that are families that have lost ones, please don't feel that you are alone in your grief and sorrow. We, as a, as a city, as a community, we are your family too, and know that we support you and care for you too, and you're, as, as you grieve your loved ones. That's all I have for tonight.
District Seven.
Uh, so, I too attended the, um, Memorial Day ceremony yesterday, it was very well done. Uh, and I, you know, appreciate the, um, American Legion for what they did to honor our veterans. And, sir, I'd, I'd like to just tell you, from the standpoint of, uh, understanding with Vietnam, uh, welcome home. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Thank you so much, sir. Yes, sir. Well, thank you so much. Thank you for coming tonight, and, yes, sir, thank you so much. Renee, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, John. Uh, we do not have any board of committee appointments or public hearings tonight. We will move to department reports and engineering.
Who has half the agenda? Who has half the agenda?
Yeah.
You are not.
Your next half of the agenda will be.
You are not.
Better than not, the least favorite person, right?
That's right, that's right.
Okay, um, first I have Resolution Number twenty twenty-four, one fifty R. This is authorizing a PSA with Shoals Electric to rewire the traffic signal, uh, and all the other electrical components that go along with it at the five fifty-five Waltrana Highway intersection. Um, it's Project twenty-four, zero, one, five, not to exceed nineteen thousand, three hundred dollars to be paid from the engineering department budget, I'm sorry.
Okay, motion and second, any discussion, questions?
Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Council President Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thanks.
And next I have Resolution Number twenty twenty-four, one fifty-six R, authorizing a PSA with Haliburton Surveying and Mapping for surveying services for Palmer, Palmer Park Parking Lot Edition. Uh, that's Project twenty-three, zero, two, two, not to exceed sixty-five hundred dollars to be paid from the rec department budget.
May I approve?
Second.
Motion, second, any questions?
I have a question. Whenever, whenever we paid that, uh, I forgot who was the architect firm that did our master plan. They did survey, we don't have a, a whole survey from that.
Yeah, they did a copper. They did not?
I got you. I thought some, we maybe already had, we could reuse it. I got you. All right.
Okay. Can you say Palmer Park Parking Lot three more times?
I got it. I practiced downstairs.
All right.
Okay, ready for vote?
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Council President Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thanks.
And next I have Resolution Number twenty twenty-four, one fifty-six R, authorizing a PSA with Haliburton Surveying and Mapping for surveying services for Palmer, Palmer Park Parking Lot Edition. Uh, that's Project twenty-three, zero, two, two, not to exceed sixty-five hundred dollars to be paid from the rec department budget.
May I approve?
Second.
Motion, second, any questions?
I have a question. Whenever, whenever we paid that, uh, I forgot who was the architect firm that did our master plan. They did survey, we don't have a, a whole survey from that.
Yeah, they did a copper. They did not?
I got you. I thought some, we maybe already had, we could reuse it. I got you. All right.
Okay. Can you say Palmer Park Parking Lot three more times?
I got it. I practiced downstairs.
All right.
Okay, ready for vote?
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Council President Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Next is Resolution twenty twenty-four, one sixty R, authorizing a permissive use agreement with SWR Holdings for grading and clearing of property near the Browns Ferry Burgreen Road Roundabout Project.
May I approve?
Second. Any questions? Ready for vote?
Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Council President Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, any questions?
Do you have any ideal places picked out for this, or?
Where the old ones were. Those will be spanned instead of, uh, there were three culverts, uh, three or four, I got, oh, they were pulled out right before I got here, but it's where they were before.
Okay.
They're doing the structural design and the fabrication. Well, they're starting the structural design now, uh, and then, uh, once we're done, Garber's working on, you know, how high they need to be and, and, you know, what the span length has to be. We'll get them put in as soon as we can.
Any other questions? All right, ready for vote?
Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Council President Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Michael. Hi, Eric.
Again, I ask for your considerations for proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-four, one thirty-seven, amending section eighteen dash three of the Madison City Code to allow novelty and sparkler devices. This is the second reading. Uh, first one was on the thirteenth. May the thirteenth.
May I approve?
Second. Motion, second, any questions? Are any of these things that we're going to allow, are they very noisy? Are they going to disturb dogs? Is it going to be that sort of a thing, or is it all just quiet and sparkling?
Yes. I, again, we included in the, in the packet this time, the, the placards that I gave you last time, and, uh, you know, there's sparklers, smoke devices, novelties, ground sparkling devices that do twirl, and then ground-based sparklers, but there's nothing that flies. There's no aerials. The whole bottom of that chart shows stuff that is not allowed, including the loud things that fly and pop and make, make a ton of noise. There were, I'm not guaranteeing there won't be any noise, but, uh, compared to what goes on now, a lot less noise, let's say. Uh, Huntsville, since they went to this, uh, they've experienced fifty percent less fire, fireworks-related fires and injuries, and, and I can't, I, I have not investigated it. I'll have to look into every, all of the consequences, but noise was not one of them. Sorry. But again, what I'm seeing on the chart and what, what I know is allowed, uh, is miniscule in noise compared to the other things that these will take the place of for many families.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Ready for vote?
Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Council President Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Chief. Legal.
We have two items for your consideration tonight. First thing, proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash one nineteen, repealing ordinance number twenty nineteen, that's zero, zero, nine, schedule for trash and garbage rates. The first reading was on May thirteenth of twenty twenty-four, so this is, uh, for your vote tonight. And as a reminder, what we're doing with this is we are replacing a nine-year schedule that was originally passed in twenty nineteen, and we're just simply going to move to creating new rates each year with an annual ordinance.
Motion, second, any questions?
What's the, I mean, you just explained the purpose of it, but, I mean, what's the rationale behind it from the standpoint? I thought when we received or solicited quotes, it was a, a multi-year, uh, request, and then they gave us bids back with rates per year, so.
They did, they have the option each year to increase the rates, and on certain years they have. So what we passed in two thousand and nineteen tried to forecast, because at the time we thought, well, all right, there's, we can increase every three years, there's going to be a set increase, but, uh, per both of our agreements with both Huntsville Utilities and Athens Utilities, they can bring in other increases as well, and with inflation, uh, they did just that. So, uh, what we have on the books now is from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty, twenty-seven, and each year there's what we thought would be the forecasted rate, and we're already off from that. So what we're doing now is trying to repeal that in whole, so that each year we can assess, after reaching out to the utility companies, do we have an increase this year that you're going to implement that we have to pass, that, that's going to be included in those numbers. Uh, in this way, each single year we'll know precisely what the number is, and we can pass a, an ordinance. Uh, the what we have on the books now is incorrect, unfortunately.
Any other questions? When you say incorrect, what exactly do you mean by incorrect?
Uh, the, the figure that we had forecasted for twenty twenty-four is not the rate that we currently have per our agreements with Athens, Athens Utilities and Huntsville Utilities.
So it's numerical, I think.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, ready for vote?
Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Council President Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Council President Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Any other questions? When you say incorrect, what exactly do you mean by incorrect?
Uh, the, the figure that we had forecasted for twenty twenty-four is not the rate that we currently have per our agreements with Athens, Athens Utilities and Huntsville Utilities.
So it's numerical, I think.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, ready for vote?
Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Council President Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Council President Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Council, I'm sorry. I think she said nay.
Thank you.
Is that right?
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Uh, thank you, Brian. Planning.
All right, uh, this evening we have just first readings, uh, effectively for you, other than the resolution. Uh, the first item is proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash one twenty-three, and this is the first reading, um, and this is for the annexation of, um, the property that is so marked, I don't have a little pointer saying here, but you can see where it says proposed R two, and it's pointing to a small rectangle next to the R two property. Does everybody see that on the, the screen? Otherwise, here, I can't. Little rectangle right there, or, audience, it's this little rectangle. So this is an existing, um, single-family property. It is fifteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four square feet, so about point three seven acres, and it's just a home that's requesting to annex in. And as you can see from that exhibit, the properties that are shown in white are unincorporated. The properties that are either gray, yellow, tan, or yellow, um, red, are properties that are in the city of Madison. And within that subdivision along Roma Drive and Forest Drive, you can see where individual single-family properties have annexed in over the years, and this property is just requesting to do that. Uh, this did go to the planning commission, they are recommending approval, and again, this is the first reading, and we'll bring the second, um, the actual adoption, um, to you later. Any questions before we move on? Okay. The next item is, um, proposed Resolution Number twenty twenty-four dash one twenty-five dash R, and this is to set a public hearing on the zoning of the same property. Uh, they are requesting an R two zoning, um, and that is due to the lot size. Our options would have been either R one A, uh, well, R one A, um, or R one, but it's proposed as R two just, um, because of the lot dimensions didn't meet the R one A. And you can see that the property to the east, which is actually a school, is zoned R two, and there's other R two property within the area. And R two is the city's, is considered a medium-density residential category. It has minimum lot size of ten thousand, five hundred square feet, and as I mentioned, this property is fifteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four, so it meets the minimum lot size for R one A, it just doesn't meet the minimum, uh, lot width. R one A requires a hundred feet lot width, and I, if I recall, this property's about seventy feet or eighty feet wide, um, so that's why we're, uh, recommending the R two. So I'd ask you to approve this resolution, and it would set the public hearing for July eighth.
May I approve?
Motion, second, any discussion?
Of course, I have.
Yes.
Bringing in one lot randomly at the end of a, at a median road there. That's not special. It'd be all.
Well, um, there, there's an existing home there already. Those folks are, um, using Madison Roads. They're no doubt using other services within the city. Um, this allows the city to collect some property tax from that, that home. Um, presumably, they're already shopping here, right, and we're already benefiting